Welcome to the Tempe City Council and Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Board Joint Meeting Agenda. Members of the meeting who attend the meeting fiscally are asked to maintain distance between the parties, and maps are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Item number one is called Order, and item number two is welcome introductions. I guess that's me. I know that Councilor Birketing is going to be virtual this evening, but I want to make sure that we can come in here quick, round the table here, so people at least know who's sitting here, and for the audience who might be watching at home. So, maybe Kara, I'll start with you, since you're at the far end of the table.
Hi, Kara Throstia, interim city clerk.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sonia Blain, Tempe City Attorney.
Hi, everybody. Andrew Chang, City Manager.
Hello, Jennifer Adams, Vice Mayor. It's an impressive-looking board, by the way.
Cory Woods, Mayor.
Harleen Finn, City Council.
Doreen Garland, Councilmember.
Forget it, Hodge, Councilmember.
Good afternoon. Wydel Holmes, Interim Directors, Stand for the Assembly.
Welcome. I'm Susan.
I'd say the address, Director for the Housing.
Monjula Foz, Director for the Housing.
Also, just to let everybody know, Councilor Bovar just sent me a text and said he is here, but he's having a problem turning on his mic for his WebEx. So, maybe we should, you know, double-check that to make sure the technology's completely working, but just wanted to let people know he was here. He's probably calling Vice Mayor Adams to let her know. So, what about that? Okay, item number three is the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing: Role and Responsibilities, and that presentation will be given by Irma Hollaby Kane, who's our Deputy Community Health and Human Services Director for Housing. And I know Irma is virtual this evening. Irma?
I am. Thank you, Mayor Woods, Councilmembers, Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Board of Directors. I'm incredibly disappointed I cannot be there in person today for our first joint board meeting, but thank you for allowing me to join virtually. Kara, if we could go ahead and get to slide three. It doesn't say much, but, um, so the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing, what we refer to affectionately as the affiliate, is an extension of the Tempe Housing Authority, and it's formed to meet specific HUD requirements that allows it to pursue objectives that are outside of transitional HUD or trans-typical, not transitional, typical HUD limitations. More specifically, it's structured in a manner that allows us the flexibility to operate in a similar manner as a private developer. The Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing can acquire real property, secure loans, qualify for 501(c)(3) funding opportunities that housing authorities are generally not eligible for, such as philanthropic funds, and to ultimately hold properties as permanently affordable workforce housing units for the community. So, we have some definitive roles and responsibilities that include maintaining records and conducting itself as a public body as per Arizona revised statutes, maintain its status as a 501(c)(3), conduct all interaction and transactions with the city in a manner that preserves its not instrumentality of the city-type relationship as defined by HUD, to develop a five-year housing investment plan, and to coordinate with the city on an annual basis to agree on annual project and funding recommendations. And that's actually the primary reason why we're meeting today. If you can, thank you, Kara. So, before we get to hearing from the city on its priorities and how it relates to affordable housing, I'll give you a brief update on what we've been up to in the affiliate. So, there's currently 55 rental units that are owned by the affiliate, 44 are occupied, five are offline for rehabilitation, and six units are being used by partner agencies such as the Foundation for Senior Living and Care7 for an overall gross occupancy rate of 94%. The units are designated affordable housing, so that's 0 to 80% AMI, or area median income, and the net income generated from these units is used to support the affordable and workforce housing that are in it. So, the coalition, of course, purchased recently Watson's Flowers, and it was for the purposes originally of redeveloping it into affordable units, but now it's under a purchase-and-sale agreement to TCAA for the development of their social services campus. Administratively, we've hired Teresa Carmichael, CPA, to take on our bookkeeping. Ms. Carmichael's experience includes more than 30 years in accounting, tax prep, finance, and small business management, and she and her staff have been excellent at guiding us with fresh insights, thorough research, and objective analysis. And then I'm also happy to share that after a review of multiple proposals, effective May 1st, MEB Affordable would be taking on our property management. Thank you, Kara. So, I know that the city council is familiar with this dashboard for Hometown for All, but I have not had the opportunity to share this with the Board of Directors for the affiliate. So, Hometown for All is the city's innovative affordable housing initiative that was approved by city council back in January of '21. Hometown for All has done two things. It's created a dedicated funding source where 50% of certain permitting fees are used to support the affiliate's activities, to help Tempe realize its vision of affordable and workforce housing for all that want it, and it is inspiring the development community to donate to support the affiliate's work. The affiliate uses these funds, or will use these funds, for acquisition of land as well as creating permanently affordable housing units and the redevelopment of city-owned properties for the purposes of affordable housing. In the past two years, much has been accomplished, and as you can see on this slide, it really tells quite a story. $1.8 million has been invested in site preparation work at city-owned lots for future development, and $1.7 million was used to purchase Watson's Flowers. We have received $3.3 million in donations from the development community, and we have received more than $17.5 million pledged by developers for future projects in the coming years. So, the work before us is tremendous to do the work to ensure that individuals and families in Tempe have a broad range of affordable housing opportunities available to them now and into the future. And with that, unless you have any questions, we should go ahead and get to the work of figuring out our goals for the coming year. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, Irma. Does anyone around the table have any questions, any board members, council members?
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor Adams and Councilor Garland.
How much is it costing us to have someone else run the books and things, sort of manage the properties?
Thank you. Great question. With regard to the bookkeeping, I do not remember those fees off the top of my head and nor the property management fees, but I am happy to follow up with an answer to that question, or I might even have it before we end today, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
On the bottom, please. Pardon, Pappy Davis on the bottom. Does management fees on the very bottom? Yeah, $61,300. Right here.
Irma, does, um, Councilor Garland, does $61,300 sound like right about to you?
Mayor, councilmembers, it certainly sounds like what we have paid in the past, but that is not an indication of what we've agreed to pay going forward, starting May 1st.
Councilor Garland.
So, you've mentioned the $1.8 million that we put into purchasing our own property, and then it looks like on the chart it says $2.8 million this year or this past year. How many properties are those? If I remember correctly, I thought it was three, that we were trying to get show already?
Thank you, councilmember. I'm trying to view this slide on my small computer. Forgive me. May I ask, I cannot see everyone who is there. Is Susie there? Who can maybe answer that?
Yes, she is here. Susie?
One. I have a question. How many lots, trying to get show already, but invested the last fiscal year $1.8 million? Is this fiscal year, this last fiscal year, $2.6 million? I'm just curious, somebody lost that that is. I thought it was three, but I can't remember. Five? Okay.
Okay.
And just as a note, I want to make sure for people here at home, because I know they're going to be able to hear Susie in the back of the room, the $1.8 million that Councilor Garland was talking about is for the remediation on five city-owned lots. Councilor Garland?
The two points, the $2.6 million that we've invested this past year, is that separate or is that the same that go along with it?
I'm sorry. Was there a question before me?
Well, so, Councilor Garland was asking Susie for the additional $2.8 million. She was asking, is that separate?
I can follow up with them.
Okay. So, thank you.
If I may, I can answer to, for example, with the affiliate, there was a vacant lot purchased for the amount of a little over $146,000. Then there was another property that was purchased for $206,918, a third property for $351,000 and some change, and then finally Watson's Flowers for $1.75 million. All told, that equals probably close to $2.4 million. Is that what we're referring to?
That's what I needed. Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah. Councilor Chin?
I have a question about the pledges in funding for Hometown for All. Do we, how are those handled? Do we follow a standard? They're always over 10 years, over five years, or are they all different?
Councilmembers, Mayor Woods, I believe each one of the donations are unique in how they determine how they will donate the money to the city, whether it be at the time of certificate of occupancy, whether it be distributed over the course of 10 years. It would just depend on what the donations parameters are as offered by the developer, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. Who manages the pledge? Let me give you some background. I work with donors, and I'm wondering, how do we remind them? Who manages the pledge reminders? Can you give me some background on that? Irma, do you mind if I take this one?
Thank you, Rosa.
Beth, one of the things with the affiliate, you're a councilmember or mayor, councilmember Chin, we have had those internal discussions because, obviously, this has been a fast-paced growing program. There's been changes in staff. Obviously, this is the first time we are able to meet with the affiliate board, and one of the things that we've talked about, and why it does going to help facilitate the conversation, is kind of the standard operating procedures of the program. The warm handoff between what happens when a developer says, "I'd like to donate," at the dais to all of you, and who takes it from there. So, Wydel's been kind enough to help us through creating kind of the decision tree and mapping out. So, when all of us no longer exist for this organization, it stays and is anchored with a system that everyone understands. Irma's adoption or coming into this role has been kind of fast-paced, not just the new role of the city when acquisition a property, but obviously management. I think there's a question regarding the cost of management. We built ourselves so quickly and so successful that we needed to kind of shore up who is managing these properties to make sure it is Tempe proper. Like, this is our values. This is how we want to manage what we're seeing. So, all of that has been internal conversations from community development, from affordable housing, obviously Irma's team, strategic planning in ourselves, and the mayor's office. So, we would be happy to, in a Friday package, share with you kind of the standard operating procedures of what, who does what, and part of that is Irma's trying to shore up who on her team would help with that, because right now it is Irma and myself either following up based on what we're hearing and making sure that those pledges come through our door. That makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Monjula.
So, as someone who just participates in the program, but I think that's a good point. And so, I would just offer this to you. I mean, because I looked at this list that I was sent through the day, and I was like, oh, I need to follow up with somebody. So, we appreciate that. Follow up with peoples that I know. But, you know, it's what I think Charlie's point, and I know you were going to do this just to add a little checklist, but I think, just the same way of like, like, for example, I can reach the ASU Foundation, they sent me a little letter saying, hey, remember you told us you're going to give us this? And, you know, and then they, I think that would help. And then the other checklist item, just to add to your list, is, I think, for these people I know, depending on the amount, and some are much larger, so it doesn't work, but are developing typically a building permit, so you might, maybe this little checklist would be developed, or that could help you so that it gets caught when they, you know, when they're sending out permits. I mean, when they're giving the money for their permits and they check this up, you know, they're really bored. The pending tends to be before these buildings come, right? So, in this little bit of a market issue, you may have a little bit of a delay, you know, as like next year may be a little slower upkeep as people are trying, you know, as the interest rates rise, and you may have slower, you know. I can tell that people are going to be, take a little bit longer to submit building permits as they kind of see what's going on in the market, but you don't want to lose that kind of momentum.
Agreed.
So, but if there's something I can do to help you, I'm happy to do so.
No, that's happy. That's very helpful, because we have both our internal process as well as the external connection points with the like you and developers and all of that. So, I think we need to make sure it's a systems approach. So, that, to Rosa's point, it sustains over people, place, and time, and that's our initial flowchart right now. The way we visualize it, we were able to see some gaps that we had, and that's what we're still working on. So, happy to share that and get, most of all, get feedback first.
Well, I think there's others that want to help you. So, I guess that's probably what I'm hoping, right? Because like Rosa and Irma can't do everything, so if there's some way that we can help you, please let me know. I don't, we don't need to report. If there's some help.
I wrote that down, Mike.
Yeah.
I'm happy to help. Helping Rosa and Irma. Yeah.
It's recorded, Rosa. Thank you, Monjula.
What are, just sort of, it's not really a question, because it's a point I wanted
to make too, because I know the Hometown for All funding is sort of very specific about when that program was started in January of 2021, and it's, and we have to obviously keep some of this accounting separate to make sure that we're really talking about the accuracy of this program. But there are other things that this council has done over the last two and a half, nearly three years, that are not contained in this document. As an example, the RFP that we have out for the Apache Central project that Apache endorsed with the city spent $10.7 million acquiring the old food city, that was money that was actually spent directly out of the general fund before there was really Hometown for All funding that was available, because the program was so new. And, you know, the RFP, we talked about, you know, getting up to five stories of housing and up to 400 units of mixed-income housing, along with an affordable grocery store at that area. The other property that we purchased across the street where Haji Baba and Don Filo's and Kaiwan are, where the city spent $4.4 million to acquire that site for a future affordable housing opportunity, and also to preserve those existing businesses, that was money that also came out of the general fund, because at that time, we didn't have enough money specifically in the coalition account to make that acquisition, and we considered that to be critically important. I also think about the RFP that's currently out right now for the Tempe Performing Arts Center as well, to also do mixed-income housing on that site. That won't be captured in this document, because all we're doing in that situation, we weren't acquiring property, we're simply repurposing an existing city-owned property. So, I say all that because I know the members of council and the board here know all of this, but just for the folks watching at home, if they say, well, you know, I'm wondering about some of these numbers, there are a lot of other projects that fall technically outside of a Hometown for All program, but are still part of the city's overall affordable housing and Hometown for All strategy, like the food city, like the property across the street, like the feedback facility. So, I just wanted to make sure that we kind of give a full scope and a full view of everything the city is doing to create more permanently affordable housing for people who need it. Anyone else? All right. Oh, Jack, yes.
Irma, I'm just looking through a few line items here. We're paying a taxes as a 501(c)(3). Is that just inescapable, that we will come up against needing to pay taxes from time to time?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't see who's speaking. Is this Director Drummond? That's a great question, and an astute observation. Our bookkeeper is currently submitting paperwork to the assessor's office for a property tax exemption.
I've got another question.
Of course.
Line item for Cox Cable, is that for office expenses, or is that putting in cable in the residential unit?
Forgive me, but I do not know how to answer that one. I will have to follow up. Director Drummond?
Another one is that we have HOA dues. Is the HOA the property manager for that site, aside from the other property management company, we use all other properties?
Director Drummond, Mayor Woods, council. So, as I understand, we own a number of units, such as condominiums, and in those particular developments, it is part of an overall HOA, and as members of that HOA, we have to pay dues. Does that explain?
Yes, very good.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else, any other questions on item three? All right, a quick question. I see Wydel's kind of teed up here. Do we have item number four, Irma, the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Financial and Performance Update? Or do we already basically kind of cover a lot of that?
We did cover that, Mayor Woods. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure. I thought we had, we kind of condensed those a little bit. Okay. And so, everyone's okay on that, on item four? No other questions?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, so, Councilor Garland, quickly.
Board member Drummond, he asked a couple of the questions that I had in mind. I'm just curious about, on line item 6018, it says security services. I'm just wondering what those security services are.
I am not recalling what security services may be for any of the affiliate's properties, so I will have to follow up. And I'm wondering if that, well, no, that's kind of a big line item. I'm just wondering if that is a miskey for something else. Please allow me to follow up on that.
Yeah, that would be, and the other one was the cleaning services for $40,000 on here. Is that cleaning up after somebody leaves, or is that us repairing and fixing and getting it ready when we first purchase? I'm just curious what that is.
I am nearly certain that has to do with turning units after someone has left it and getting it ready for a new tenant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Garland. Anyone else, further comments or questions on the budget? Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I may be able to provide some clarification on the security services expenditure, recalling some prior conversations I had with Levon Lamy. We had a property, I don't recall which property, that we, that the affiliate purchased that had been entered into, and folks were occupying it who certainly didn't have a right to. I do recall Mr. Lamy securing some security services to patrol that particular property. I recall that vividly. Don't recall the dollar amount, because I would not know that, but I do remember that event.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other further comments or questions on item number four?
Just one thing, on the cleaning services question, your preface after Levon said that they were up against high expenses when tenants leave, especially smoking tenants, when the property's supposed to be non-smoking, said it's through the roof, to be able to remove that out of the smaller part.
Thank you, Director Drummond. Anyone else, further comments, questions on item four? All right. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the agenda, move on to item number five, which is City of Tempe and Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Annual Affordable Housing Goals, and I'll turn it over to Wydel.
Thank you, Mayor, council, directors. Thank you for inviting me and Irma to help facilitate a discussion or discovery about the connection points that the affiliates and the city have in regards to advancing affordable housing here in the city of Tempe. So, I'm actually going to toss it back to the mayor to give an overview of what the city's goals are, and then we'll have a conversation about things that you discovered as part of that conversation that will also then help inform and align how you would like to, as the affiliate, support your strategic plan and goal planning as part of perhaps a next step.
Well, I can be very, I can be very brief about this. One of the things that I know I talked about, I believe probably in a State of the City speech roughly two years ago or so, was how in the inventory that was done right around 2018, 2019, before I was, before I became mayor, was it talked about how we needed approximately 11,000 additional units of affordable/workforce housing to keep pace with current demand in the city. I know that recently Irma gave us a presentation back on December 8th at a work-study session that said we were more or less good in the areas of market-rate housing and workforce housing, but we still have gaps when it comes to luxury housing and even more specifically affordable housing. So, that's probably where we should really focus a lot of our goals, is making sure that we have the affordable housing stock that we need, because clearly, for luxury housing, you're going to have, you know, investors coming into the market who've got access to traditional capital, and they can make those kinds of units happen, but it's the affordable housing that typically becomes the most challenging, given developers' sort of pursuit of low-income housing tax credits, or what they call LIHTC awards, from the Arizona Department of Housing. And so, we try, we're trying to make sure that we can get to those 11,000 units, because our biggest thing is, I know we all, as a council and as a board, talk about the number of teachers that are getting priced out of our community. I'm looking at councilmember Podge, who's also on the Tempe Union High School District Governing Board. I've met with her superintendent, Dr. Mendel, and I've had conversations with him about that. And so, our school districts are trying to look for ways to ensure that their teachers and the educators working for them can still afford to remain in the city of Tempe. We also, I know I had a meeting probably 18 months or so ago with nine hotel general managers throughout the city of Tempe, and a lot of them in the downtown area, who said our biggest challenge here is frankly not even hiring employees, it's keeping employees due to the lack of affordable housing in and around the downtown. We have a lot of employees who are coming in from the West Valley every day, and at the point that someone offers them $2 or $3 more an hour, especially with gas prices being where they are, they're gone. And the challenge that that becomes, then your hotels and a lot of your hospitality industry suffers, because then people complain about a lack of service or slow service or things of that nature. So, their perspective is whatever the council and the city can do to get more affordable housing in the immediate vicinity, so our workforce can get to and from work, that would be incredibly helpful. And so, I think one of the main things that we wanted to talk about here today, and I appreciate Wydel leading this conversation, is just to make sure that we, as a council, are also very much in alignment with our board for the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing, that we kind of have a general sense of what opportunities we would collectively like to pursue. And, I mean, as an example, we talked about how we made those purchases of the Apache Central property and the property across the street, because at that point, the Hometown for All Fund didn't have enough funds to do those things, but at that point, we still recognized those were critical acquisitions, and if we didn't move as a council at that point in time, we would have lost them. And so, the council, I really appreciate, stepped up and unanimously said, these are things we need to do to fulfill our promise of creating more permanent affordable housing opportunities. But I think the main point of this conversation is just to make sure that when we walk away from here, the city council and our board, as well as anyone watching at home, has a clear understanding of what the as well as anyone watching at home, has a clear understanding of what the city of Tempe's affordable housing strategy is and that we are working collaboratively to make sure that we reach those goals.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that. I'd just like to open it up. One of the first things I'd just like for you to do is to think about what images or phrases just stood out to you as the mayor shared the city's goals and activities that we kind of regards to affordable housing.
I'll give you one. When I talk about, I reference Councilmember Hodge, but my mother was a teacher in the New York City public school system for 30 years. And I think about her a lot when I think about our need to create more affordable housing. I just think that it's unconscionable that people who are teaching our students and our kids how to read and write and do arithmetic can't afford to live in this community anymore. So the visual that I get immediately is of that teacher who's doing such an incredible job with all of our students in Tempe Elementary or Tempe Union or Kyrene, who is commuting in each and every day, 45 minutes to an hour each way because they can't afford to live in our city. And that's something that I really want us to try to correct. Thoughts?
Multi-unit housing, having more of those rather than focusing on rehabbing single-family units or buying properties to build around houses, apartments. I live in a place that has 69 rental units, hence a very small footprint. I think that's something. See if we can go high, stack up stories.
Thank you, Board Member Drummond. Board Member Hodge?
I don't know how this would connect in, but I'm thinking about people who are on our Section 8, our housing vouchers, getting them off into affordable housing. So how do we get more affordable housing so we can move those people off of the vouchers and move more people onto who needs the vouchers into it? So like transition between that because there has to be a transition. If they don't, we're never going to get the people who need vouchers to use them because they're always going to be used. So how do we connect that to make sure that they are going into something like Hometown For All, they could start buying, or moving into affordable housing, which they don't need that last piece of the voucher? So that's the question that I have.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Garland. I put it the second before we move on. Board Member Drummond's comment about trying to create more multi-unit housing, especially in a city that's completely landlocked and built out. I think we have to talk about how we can afford to grow up because we're not going to be able to create more single-family home developments in the city of Tempe. It's going to have to be verticals development. And I think specifically to do that, we're going to have to make sure that we really, for lack of a better term, attack the issue that many times people have of, I don't like apartments. No more apartments. People who live in apartments aren't part of the community. They're not invested in the community the same way we are. The reality is, that's not true because as you talked about, he lives in an apartment unit, I live in an apartment unit as well. And I think we're both very much invested in the city of Tempe, which is why we're both sitting here this evening. But I think we're going to have to address that with a lot of our constituents when concerns are raised about, I don't like height, I don't like density, I don't like multifamily. That's the only way we're going to be able to provide housing for people who really need it in our city. Councilmember Garland?
Along with those lines, I would say, thinking about what we need to do about the NIMBYism, trying to, working like changing the narrative of who is living in the affordable workforce housing. So I'd use my son as an example. He was working for ASU and the salary that he was making as a single person, he would be qualifying for board housing. So I think we need to, we need to talk about what that narrative is and how can we, as a community, let people know who people are that are going to be living in those places. The other thing is, is we always talk about the units, but the units people, people, and this is all about people.
Board Member Paris?
So for me, I'm thinking about families. As we talked about, first example the mayor gave of people working for hotels. And the reason why people would say, other than your commute, why you would need to leave for another job rather than in Tempe, is because a lot of times your quality of life with your family is impacted. And that's, that would be the same for teachers as well. Additionally, I think about multifamily housing and why most people not opt for it if they have choices. Because it's difficult to live in such a small footprint. And you certainly sometimes don't feel like you're doing anything. There's sometimes that joy is a whole head. The quality of affordable workforce housing is really important, I think, for a community like this if we have not a lot of other options in terms of building, like you have to build back.
Board Member Boss?
I will add, of course, that's about, not about the people, but maybe try to, hopefully this board can help the council, you know, change the narrative, try to raise something. I know the mayor, a long time ago, was, you know, allowing more density in commercial centers because they're not directly impacting single-family housing. And it may be a way to try to, one thing that I've, council's like very supportive, it's like diversity of housing throughout Tempe. So we try to get down to, you know, some of those retail center, you know, in Southern baseline, you know, that way that you, that may be an opportunity for us to help, you know, bring in some diversity and bring in some density. Some of the sites that are right on our chariots probably aren't bothering anybody. But I, you know, to you guys' help, if there's, you know, I think, like if there's something that the board can help, like further some of this discussion and get more involved in helping families. And I think, I think we all want to help, you know, both families and teachers. And, you know, it's becoming less diverse here. And I, you know, I prefer that we have more, you know, ability groups to wide variety, but I'm not, you know, just the economic diversity in Tempe, which is really important.
Anyone else? Further comments or thoughts?
Mayor Woods, this is Irma. I'm sorry. I can't seem to figure out how to raise my hand. I wanted to bring up the idea after listening to you about opportunity, seizing opportunity when you and the council first came on board with affordable housing, bringing affordable housing to the city of Tempe, or committing to it, rather. And that brings to mind a number of opportunities that have come our way over the course of the last couple of months since I've been in the city of Tempe that unfortunately the city is unable to seize on right now. So for example, Wilson Arts and a couple of properties that are on East Apache that are across the street from where we have major redevelopment occurring. So 1409 East Apache, each, East Apache, and right across the street from it, a little sliver of land at 1395 East Apache.
Now, Irma, I really appreciate that. And I think that's another really good point about kind of why we're here today as well. Because they're being, granted, we're two separate entities. I mean, the coalition being a 501(c)(3) and us being the members of the city council. But there might be times where the city may not have the money to dip into our general fund to go out and acquire a property. But it's one of those things where we would love to have the ability with Irma as sort of a conduit to have that conversation with the coalition board to say, the council wants, would like at least for the affiliate to take a look at this property. Now, you may look at it and turn around and say, well, you know, we appreciate that, but we don't think this is a good strategic opportunity that we want to pass ourselves. But we would love to be able to have the conversation to at least say to Irma, would you at least be willing in your capacity as a member of our staff to go back to the board and say, this is an opportunity that the council would like to take advantage of. They may lack the funds, but would you at least kind of do some of the vetting and the due diligence and see if you also would agree that it might be a good acquisition opportunity in the future?
And I'll pose another question for discussion, and that is, where might the affiliate challenge by aligning to and supporting similar priorities that the city has? Where do you see perhaps the challenges that are there?
What I would say is-
Don't pull out the laundry list, though. In general.
I would certainly say that there's a finite amount of dollars that are available because we do have properties that we currently have to maintain. And then to obtain more, you have to sort of figure that in as well.
Councilmember Garland?
I was going to say land, property. You know, we, again, as the mayor said, we're landlocked, so locating property or property that we could purchase and turn into affordable housing or workforce housing, I think is going to be a challenge. It's always going to be a challenge.
Yes, Councilmember Hodge?
I'm going to ask the question. Do we have any workforce? I will, I'll probably answer my own question, but do we have any workforce or any affordable housing south of Bay Area? Bottom of the century, that's the thing. And why are we not looking in that area?
I guess, Irma, that might be a great question for you. Do we, to Councilmember Hodge's point, do we have any affordable or workforce housing that you're aware of that is south of Bay Line Road in Tempe?
Mayor Woods, council members, Board of Directors. So there are a couple of ways to answer that, but ultimately, my unfamiliarity with the city of Tempe and where all of the various 55 properties are located, I'm really rather ignorant. And I would have to follow up with you to answer that question.
You know, if I could answer, I mean, just, pardon my personalities, I think one of the issues has been that the Lytech funds typically support being on transit lines. And so in the past, it's, you know, Levon and other, you know, as you're looking at where you're going to get funded, it tended to be around here because the city invested so much in the transportation. But I think to your point, as the city invests more in rapid transit, and you say like, look, we have Orbit, it's going to the city, I think it's a good opportunity to say like, we have these strong transit lines throughout the city. But I think that is how it kind of evolved initially.
We have to settle later. We're going to run out of states in North Tim.
100%.
So what are we going to do after that?
I'd like to echo the comment about housing being near public transportation. Tempe needs to get with Valley Metro about having more dependable service. For years, I wrote it, and it's horrible. It's still horrible. You can't, you may want to go half a mile in that way, 45 minutes for a bus, come every 20 minutes, every day. I don't know why anyone who needs to hold a job down, they need it, need it, would depend on Valley Metro to get them there unless they wanted to ride an hour for a work pair. It's just not different.
Vice Mayor?
So a couple of things. One is, we have a new Valley Metro CEO, and she's incredible. And things are changing in a positive direction. I've seen firsthand, she's cleaned house with some of these people that were deadwood. And it's bringing some real leaders in the community. Sorry about my voice. But it's good, it's going much better. And she's not a politician. She is a trained, incredibly smart, knows transportation so well. And I'll introduce you sometime. Her name's Jessica. She's super nuts. So I think we're going to see, we're seeing changes. I know that the city's been very involved with Valley Metro and what we're going to do and things like that. And we have a very good relationship now. We're going to Valley Metro, so I'm thinking that things will improve. So that's down to just that. So keep them posted. Anyway, the second thing is, we do have the county island. We have a lot of property available up there. It's the only property basically left in town. It's hard. That's, I mean, as big as it is and things, and we're, you know, putting projects there. And I think that maybe we could have a partnership, and I was talking about this, with you guys as far as it can land up there and doing some more photobiology. And we do need to go vertical. Cool. Go vertical is my, my thing. And we're going to have to do that up there and really have great views, have a nice, nice property. It's close to the lake, close to all kinds of things. So that's, that's something that I would throw out there to look at.
I need to go to, oh, I need to go to Councilmember Garo, then I'll come back, so.
Councilmember Woods, can you, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. No, I, to Councilmember Hodge's point, I believe that's a great idea, exploring properties down south. And I know that infill, you know, talking to other developers from other locations, they're quite curious about where are those infill properties at? Is that money that we can utilize in those areas, you know, that we can potentially do infill different type of housing but affordable at the same time? I think that kind of shows the, the initial also, the spread out, that we're not just concentrating in just one area of the town, that we're actually having the ability to put it in other areas of the town, which, you know, with location and people working in various industries, not to say that everyone is working in downtown. There are people working in other areas of the town that would enjoy actually even the, the school systems that are in that town. So I think there's opportunity when you talk about spreading out the affordability and where we can do it at. The second thing is, if we're exploring, you know, we talked about the Valley Metro and, and the system is what the system is. We, you know, we do our best to make sure that that system stays afloat and that system provides the best services possible. But at the end of the day, that's the system that we have at the moment. And like I said, we're always trying to improve it. But we do have our own system too. And maybe there's another possibility of exploring those routes. And if there's infill within those routes that we can potentially utilize, I think that's another win. But Councilmember Hodge's point, I love the idea of the ability to spread out. And then, and I think that that more coincides with not just job location, but also options of different school location, which I think is, is very important. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Garo. Councilmember Hodge?
He just, Councilmember Garo just kind of took what I was going to say. I was going to ask you the same question, Vice Mayor, that I know we have our own system. Is it anyway, is there any information about spreading more out? Because I get a lot of people saying there's not enough buses for us out there. Is there anything in the horizon about changing that? How can we do, spread our bus system out a little bit further? Because our kids have problems getting from school to school, and they sometimes can switch around with schools, but it's impossible to get to Corona sometimes versus how easy it is to get some food.
Exactly. Well, one thing that I've talked about for a number of years now is a circulator bringing Orbit down to South Tempe so everybody can ride it in town. And that would, I could help a lot with the bus, the bus problem. So you can get on, then you could get a major bus or like Apache, wherever the case may be. That would be, that would be an answer to that situation.
Thank you.
Because it is hard to get a bus down.
It is. It really is.
And Orbit, those, right. I take Orbit as far as I can go south of them. That's it, right?
Put another question into the hopper here for you. And what do you believe the affiliate can do first to support and align mutual priorities?
I suppose what we've already done.
Board Member Ross, like, we're good.
Something we haven't. I mean, I think, well, this meeting, and I think you said it, this is the first time I've seen Jack at first. I mean, we've not met. And so one thing we probably could do is figure out what the board is doing. And I'm happy, but I don't want to. But, you know, that's, I mean, we, yeah, I think in order to align ourselves underneath that, and to know ourselves, and then figure out what the board wants to do. And everybody has a lot of opinions. Certainly, this is a good start. Take what the city is doing. Irma's done a really nice job of working through some properties.
I think it's, it's also understanding where we currently are. So assessing, right, before we get to the chairman.
Anyone else? Other additional thoughts?
I would like to have meetings just like this every quarter, if that's not frequent.
To Board Member Drummond, I don't think it is. I think that if we're, and also the, the more you need, the more infrequent, the, the, the frequent, the shorter the meetings probably are. I mean, you probably can really, if you're having regular checkups, then it becomes a 45-minute to an hour meeting just to make sure that you're still kind of firing on all cylinders. So no, I think that would be a very good goal to work towards so we're not losing touch with one another and our priorities aren't diverging. Then there's, there's council races sometimes and council members, mayors switch out. So we want to make sure that we do establish that kind of continuity. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I think those meetings more regularly would be a great idea, because if we are saying that this is our priority, we need to make it a priority to that with your one.
Irma, then Councilor Hodge?
Mayor Woods, council members, Board of Directors, I just wanted to suggest that there is already a quarterly venue where I am obligated as the board president to provide the Housing Governing Board an update on affiliate business. And so, I don't know, other than Jack, who serves on that board as well, actually knew that. And so, I'd be happy to, in the future, advise the Board of Directors for the affiliate of when we'd be meeting in those quarterly meetings.
We got a, Councilmember Hodge, and I hate to put up on the spot, but our city manager, Andrew Ching, I had a really good idea, and I want to see if you might put that on the record as well, but, Councilor Hodge?
I was thinking, maybe to get us all started, maybe have a small retreat between us, connect together, and throw out some ideas together, and then, you know, make it easier when you have to meet quarterly.
Ching?
I was just telling the mayor offline just now that the Housing Authority Board, which is the council plus Mr. Drummond, meets on a quarterly basis. You're already a member of the affiliate board as well. If we attached a coalition update, affiliate update, as part of those standing quarterly meetings, the council's already convened, you're already meeting of the housing, there's a lot of overlap there, it might make sense to do that within the existing structure we have, and just add a section to it, right? Because then you, then you're already there, and the rest of the board could come, too.
Sure.
You just have to move chairs, that's all.
I was looking at it more as to where we have a different entities that are coming together like we are here today. I do know some about the daily operations of the Housing Authority affiliate, but the broader package of hometown for all, I can't hear program. Unity with other departments that are in their city or any company.
I'm not seeing who puts it.
Well, no, we can, we can definitely, I have, sorry, please.
One thing that I would suggest, and this is really exciting for me, is the coalition in person here, and so thank you for having me today. One thing I might suggest is that the topic for the next, then we'll, folks here, would be to cover all of the upcoming funding. I think that there are probably several funding sources that are going to roll out fairly soon, that could be blended into acquisitions and things like that, that may be helpful to explore, to know, and see discussions, and maybe, like, we'll facilitate that.
Thank you. Anyone else with other comments or questions?
Mayor Woods, this is Irma. To Travis's point, we are to develop a five-year plan. It is supposed to, the affiliate is to develop a five-year plan in alignment with the consolidated plan, which, by the way, we're entering the fifth year on, and it's a, that's a five-year plan. So I think, right now, the stars and the moon and the sun are all starting to align to where all of this work will converge naturally.
Sounds good. Thank you. What else?
So I'm going to just submit my final question.
Okay.
There's no wrong with the answer here. But, so to Irma's point about five years, in five years, when you look back at the work of the coalition, the affiliate, I'm still learning which one to call you, but I think it's both, right? And the council, what would be your joint headline? What would be your success story that you would want to be able to tell to your neighbor and say, I was part of that, I helped create that? What would you share? What would be your headline?
I think my biggest one would be that, that we, that the city council partnered with the Coalition Board, and we are, I'm not talking about even getting all the way to the eleven thousand units, but I'm talking about at least being on track, where we could say that we are adding this many more sort of affordable and workforce units per year, and this officially puts us on track for where we would like to be with our own goals. I think it's also important, I don't usually like to do this, but I also would love to compare the amount of units we're putting into the market compared to a lot of other surrounding cities. It's not because we necessarily need to compare ourselves to other cities, but I just want to, but I, but I would like to know, I think our residents would find that information helpful from a comparative standpoint. Councilor Regal?
I agree. I think, I think looking at what that eleven thousand number is by 2030, where we are, how is that going to break down, and our successes toward that? Yes, Mayor, in the group, the MAC committee that I am on, they are actually collecting that information on, and so we will be able to soon find out what the other cities are doing just by going on that website.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilor Regal. Oh, Councilor DeBarro?
Yeah, Mayor, no, I agree with your statement. I think, you know, collectively, you know, we want to do our part within our city, but I think that we also need to know what the region is doing. And I think that also, you know, even with the meeting I was at last night, you know, that discussion came up on, we're not doing enough. I have a state representative was telling us that we're like, not even providing any of this stuff. So I think that we need to have a clear message that, you know, what we're doing, how we're doing it, where we're doing it, and, and what our goals are going to be, but also knowing that, within the region, we are leading the way. If we are leading the way, we need to know that also. So I think, I think you're spot on. Thank you.
I can, I can tell you one thing, from the six-month Housing Supply Study Committee group that I was on, and I can say that it was, it was interesting that one of the comments that repeatedly came up was, during this conversation, was, we want all Valley communities to build more housing. And they didn't say except for Tempe, but the comment continued to be, if everyone was doing what Tempe was doing, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation. So I think that everyone sitting around this table in the back, the back of the room here, should be very proud of the community that we are and the housing that we are producing, the innovative ways that we're trying to approach it, whether it's the Coalition Boards or through hometown for all. I think the comparative numbers are critically important, because we don't want to be in a situation where we are necessarily feeling like we have to build, you know, housing for someone else or another city's workforce. Everyone has to contribute to this. But at the same time, you know, I'm extremely proud of being part of this council and with this board across the table and everyone on city staff, because it's a city that actually walks the talk. We don't sit around talking about what we want to do. We actually put plans in place, we get dedicated funding streams, and we find ways to make this stuff happen. So I couldn't be any happier. And I can tell you, the region recognizes the work that we do. Board Member Ross?
Five years, I mean, in addition to the units, is trying to do what you started with, put in place, so that we all lead, that everything is the funding stream and the process is quantified and can move on without us. Like, I want to say that this, the process we've been placed, the affordable housing, can live without us and this board, that it will continue in the community.
I love that.
You kind of stumped the band with that last question. When, when I talk to people about what Tempe is doing in housing, the first thing off my mind was power on development to assist veterans, and then re-target veterans, people that are coming out of mental health situations, they're ready to be public at large, battered women, people that have been displaced because of fire or government action or something like that. That would, I'm sure there's maybe fourteen, fifteen different target audiences that are obvious, target.
Population.
That we already serve, and I don't think we're getting that out, you know, in Tempe's weekly, well, you know, what's new this week in Tempe. I read it, but I have, I may have, it's, it's kind of like we need, we need, we need to especially try to influence other cities.
Good to have to your podcast.
Yeah, yeah. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just, you know, I want us to grow smart, too, as, as we go through, because, you know, it's not so much, like, when you buy a house, it's not so much, if you have the money, you could pay for it, but then you have to maintain it. And that's what, we're maintaining a lot of houses here, and I just want us to be, make sure that we have the money that we need to, for the maintenance also. I mean, obviously, you have this, I mean, as we grow, you know, we're going to have to add to all of that, and just make sure that we're solid, solidly funded.
Councilor Hodge?
You did say this is like our dream, right?
Your headline.
My headline. I have a headline, you know, my education, Tempe has more educators living theater schools than any other place in the valley. Because that is something that we hear a lot of, that our educated, you asked, I asked a survey to ask how many of our teachers live within the boundaries of the city, and you wouldn't want to go with them. It's very low.
I love that we can get that data.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
It's pretty low for Tempe employees, too.
Yeah, I can believe it. So let's just expand on that, Tempe employees in gyms.
Exactly. Anyone else further comments or questions?
This is Irma. I would like to add that market and luxury developers beg city of Tempe to include affordable housing.
Yeah, you brought it up. I love that. That's a good one.
It's a five-year plan. Sounds good. Anyone else? If not, Waddell, turn it back to you.
I think that concludes our discussion. The final one I did have, the mayor, is really more towards the board, is what do you want as your next steps from today? Besides the headlines that we talked about, what would you want as the next step? So I would say it's hard, that's the hardest, right?
Flexibility with that right now. Not to say we're in a structure that we're going to spend any properties, change just many, many. It's kind of like we're all, all over the board, and we're creating.
I think we want a quarterly meeting.
All right. There's that. Back to the quarterly meetings.
Thank you, Senator, for participating today. I know sometimes people think, what are we going to talk about? So I appreciate you participating and giving your, your ideas, and I look forward to continuing both council and board.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Before I get to the next portion, which is in German, does anyone have anything else for the good of the order? Rosa?
Thank you, Mayor. So just writing, following up on some items that I heard today. I know that Dr. St, the job, asset maps were worked on and on. So I was thinking, based on the, perhaps an asset map for the next meeting of the fifty-five properties, and that'll help us get our, since we're creating the history right now and the path forward on what other cities want to want to replicate. So we'll memorialize, the first meeting was recognizing that need an asset map, so we help us all get organized, where are the fifty-five properties? A list for everyone to have is a list of properties and questions about open and transparent security for where they are, right? Also with the asset map, but an itemized financial regarding, some of the questions regarding security and costs and some of the other functions, just to understand what the financials look like, and we can have that elevator speech of what, what's going on. And then, the SOPs, and thank you, thank you for anyone who is willing to help us with the standard operating procedures. And I'm looking at you. We don't have the prototype. When you are, when you are trailblazing, as the city is, as the innovative city that we are, we didn't have anything. So we need any help from developers, from attorneys at the table, from those who do this for a living and asking donors for money, to look at our standard operating procedures and make sure that we have everything in place. As has been said, we want to make sure we leave the legacy forward. So those are just some of the items to take away that hopefully, and that'll help set the agenda, at least include some of these items for the agenda.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Hodge.
I have one more. Make sure we get in there that where are the properties of our affordable housing within our city? Where are the boundaries, where they're at? That's a question I'm, that we'll come back to again.
Sounds good.
Well, just to clarify, are you talking about the affordable housing properties that we own, or just where they exist in general?
Where they exist, where, where are they, where they exist? Because I'm, I'm asking, is there anything south of Guadalupe Bay? Where?
So both an asset map as well as already provided from other sources.
And where we can, and another place where we can start looking for other areas, too, like abandoned places that are in other areas that we don't touch a lot of, you know, because I see a lot of, that are sitting there, lots that's been sitting there for years.
I, I shouldn't say, but I mean, when I think about the lot at the southwest corner of Kyrene and Guadalupe Bay.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Right behind that circle pit. I don't know what that lot is, but I bet, I bet Board Member Boz knows that.
We have a meeting about it on Thursday.
There we go. And I probably, we didn't key that up in advance. It literally popped in my head, because Councilor Hodge said it.
Mayor? Mayor?
Councilor DeBarro?
You bring up the lot, and I'm hearing rumors that that has someone interested in doing affordability on that lot. And I'm thinking you're going to have a conversation here.
I was going to say, Councilor DeBarro, I'm not, I'm not normally a fan of rumors, but that's one rumor I hope is true, so.
There we go.
There's a lot of underutilized now. After every, both landlords, out of towners coming in. Landlord can go to these.
I definitely think that, to Board Member Drummond's point, I mean, given, given the affordable housing shortage that we currently have, I think any and all ideas have to be on the table for us to reach the goal that we're all talking about here. So I think that, keep the ideas coming. Anyone else have anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, we are adjourned at 5:15. Thank you so much, everyone, appreciate it.